We got six o'clock. You ready?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening and welcome to Planning Board. Um, the chair is not going to be here, so I will be acting as the chair tonight. Just an act. We'll start with the Pledge of Legits.
The Pledge of Legits for the flag, United States of America, and the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um, why don't we start off with the, um, three-member board tonight? Oh, well, we've called to order, uh, public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay. Um, request for extension. Um, is Uma, is Uma representative here? Um, why don't we jump to that, um, the third thing on our public hearings? Uh, we've only got three members present, and I'm not sure that we technically can open a special permit.
Well, you can open it.
You can open it.
Well, we definitely can't vote. Um, the, the chair and the, the member who are missing, we have adopted the Mullen rule, so they could sign Mullen certificates. They're not obligated to. So you do run the potential peril of them deciding to not do that. Uh, but it is wholly the decision of the applicant.
Well, yep, it's not here at the moment. I'm the first one here.
Well, then.
We can wait.
Yeah, well, we'll hold off. I mean, I think we were attempting to not waste your time. But if they're, if they're coming in person, then we can wait for them to make that decision.
Okay, very good.
I assume we probably won't push it, but I'd rather just.
That's fine.
Yep, there you go. Thank you. Okay, so our first item of business is a request for extension for North End Subaru Chase Road.
Uh, they're not here. I, I told them that it was not necessary for them to attend if they chose not to unless they're one of these. Oh, there he is. He's there.
Hi, this is Jim Almonte from Land Design Collaboratives.
Hello, welcome.
Hi. Uh, yeah, I was just, um, just listening in. I, I assumed that was Adam speaking. Um, but yes, we are requesting an extension for the, um, for the permits for North End Subaru, which expire, I believe, uh, the middle of July. Uh, the construction hasn't started yet for a number of reasons that we outlined in our, in our letter. Um, basically, the soaring construction costs, the lack of skilled labor, and the current state of the, um, uh, lack of inventory for automobiles. So all of that combined, uh, the applicant has decided to delay the start of construction, uh, for the time being temporarily.
Okay. I'm not familiar with the standard procedure on this, is it?
Uh, you would decide if you find that acceptable and grant them an extension. I believe the regulations allow granting for one year.
One year?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, is there any discussion about this?
I see, I have no issue extending for a year myself.
Agreed.
Okay. Well, then I guess I'd accept a motion.
I would move that we extend the, um, what is it that we're extending?
The expiration date of the, the site plan approval.
Okay. That we extend the ex- expiration date of the site plan approval by one year.
To July 13th, 2023.
To July 13th, 2023.
Okay.
I second.
I second. Excellent. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's fine. Excellent. You are extended.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Take care.
Our next item is a request for de minimis change, Lunenburg Central, Lemmonster Shirley Road.
Uh, just for the record, Chris Anderson with Handy and Engineering, uh, here in behalf of, um, the Lunenburg Central projects. Uh, currently, the project is undergoing construction, um, but we've run into a few small things that have caused issues and concerns just for, uh, the general construction process as well as long-term, um, maintenance of the site itself. Uh, one of the changes we're requesting, um, as a field change, uh, was relative to the underground storage system. Originally, it was a plastic arch chamber system, uh, that was used to detain the stormwater system. Um, because of the general state of, uh, construction nowadays, it's one very expensive to find, um, or to get the, uh, materials and very hard to find them even more so. Um, so we're proposing or propose to, uh, replace that with a, uh, concrete galley system. Uh, we designed it to provide a commensurate rate of storage mitigation and all that kind of, uh, aspects of stormwater management. Uh, we did bring this to Adams and, uh, Graves Engineering's attention, uh, reviewed it with them and, uh, got the sign off from, uh, Jeff Walsh over at Graves Engineering relative to this change. Uh, so that's a relatively minor, uh, material change out, uh, request. Uh, the second one is relative to a curtain drain that we're proposing to install. Um, as, uh, many of the board members might remember, there is a, um, aggregate cleaning pond, if you will, that's abutting the property. Uh, during our preliminary testing, we, uh, did not encounter groundwater at levels that we're seeing now. Um, but unbeknownst to us, there was a ditch that flowed through our property, uh, that was used as more of a relief drain. Um, but because of due to the nature of construction, that was, uh, discontinued and the water in the pond eventually started to rise, uh, negatively impacting the groundwater in this area. Um, it's a generally very consistent level. Um, it goes from a high point immediately along the western property line and quickly diminishes as you get away from the pond. So it's obviously an increase in groundwater due to the rise in the pond elevation. Uh, the pond elevation is being regulated now by Keating, so it is starting to drop down quite a bit, um, and it's starting to get more under control. But just in case for long-term, uh, viability of our stormwater system, we're proposing to install a curtain drain that will run, uh, along the westerly, um, property line to intercept any ground, high groundwater that does occur. Um, based on our conversations with Keating, the regular maintenance and monitoring of the pond and keeping that, uh, pond level at a controlled level. Um, even right now, or back in the spring when it was substantially higher, the pond was about two and a half feet taller or higher in elevation.
Recording in progress.
Uh, it was actually about two feet tall, higher in elevation than was originally seen during, um, at all during the previous year. Uh, so obviously, it's a high groundwater, um, issue just caused by the pond itself. It's completely isolated. Um, and the Keating operations are going to be maintaining a much lower pond level from this point on. Uh, but this is primarily just a mean of intercepting it, so it doesn't negatively impact the stormwater system. Um, the subdrain will be set, uh, about three to four feet lower than the, uh, underground storage system, just to intercept that groundwater to prevent it from getting into that system and negatively impacting capacity. Um, from, uh, any groundwater that is captured will be transmitted underneath the building and to the opposite side of the site and follow the same general path as that ditch originally did, um, as, during the existing condition. Uh, the relatively minor change, uh, we did also bring this back to, uh, Jeff Walsh over at Graves Engineering. Um, he doesn't see an issue with it. Um, he pretty much stated that in his review letter. Um, but for the board to allow for this, uh, de minimis change, um, I should also note that this storm, or this drainpipe and the subdrain does not discharge into any of the stormwater systems. It just overland flows from, um, the discharge point over into a wetland series that everything kind of goes to nowadays. So, um, that's the general gist of the change. If there's any questions from the board, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Well, um, first off, it's immediately obvious that that drawing is different than this because there's a larger bubble, a larger cloud around the.
I did, I printed out a red, uh, line version, so the board can see it much more clearly.
Okay, and that, is that the only difference?
Yes.
That this plane is, okay.
Yes, sir.
So Jeff didn't, had two comments and both of them weren't, no issues? All right. Now, is that going to require any input from the conservation?
Uh, we would have to go before the commission for an amendment, but we want to make sure the planning board, we've already had preliminary conversations with the agent or the previous agent and one of the board, uh, commission members. Uh, they understood the intent behind what we were doing and we're okay with it, but, um, we want to get the planning board on board first, um, in order to get this going.
Okay, so, um, is this going to do anything to the drainage calculations?
Uh, nope, does nothing. So the drainage calculations were based on what we saw last year. Um, while that pond level was lower, and during those times, we never really saw groundwater. Uh, we dug test pits all around that area. Um, there was a sudden surge, but that was pretty much just water working its way through the ground. But once you dug past that, it dried up quickly, uh, which lends us to believe that the groundwater we're seeing now is from the pond, which has probably created an artificial barrier over the time because it has silt and all the fines associated with the agri processing. And it's probably just created impromptu, impermeable liner within that pond, and we just raised the level above it, and now the water's seeping through the surrounding soil beyond that limit. Um, but with regular maintenance and monitoring of the pond, that, uh, water level's going to be dropping and it won't be as much of a concern. But this is more of an insurance policy, for lack of a better term, for our system to make sure that it functions long-term.
Any, anything, any other questions? Comments, concerns?
I don't have any.
Any input, Adam?
Uh, no, I did meet with, um, Mr. Hannigan and, and Mr. Walsh to discuss this as a concept. Uh, in that meeting, it was evident that, um, this is something that was new and different when, uh, the removal of the channel that, that Mr. Anderson was talking about disappeared. Jeff was wholly supportive of the idea. He understood what they were doing. He said, you know, his only reservation was not having designs when we met. Um, subsequent, they got those designs over and, um, you've, you've seen Jeff's review and, uh, you know, I think really they're just taking something that was going to, for lack of a better term, sheet flow underground, and they're channelizing it to, to where it was going anyway. Um, I think all in all, it's going to, uh, protect that drainage system more than, than do anything else. And I think, uh, I, you know, having worked with Keating's operations to get the pond under control, I think it may even just be, um, an unnecessary addition that doesn't provide any harm but prevents, um, any sweating later on if something does happen with that pond.
Okay.
Yes.
So underground storage, is there infiltration there as well? Is there infiltration?
There is some infiltration. Um, once you get past the general, not great material, it does turn to sand and gravel. So that, that system does rely on infiltration, so that's not going to be impacted. Um, we've set the subdrain below it so that that surf, that, uh, soil layer immediately below the storage system still has the capacity to keep doing what it's doing.
If I remember correctly, all the infiltration was happening in the ponds in this system, and the, the chambering was more to contain and remediate flow and peak rates, uh, with whatever infiltration they could get from it, am I?
Yeah, correct. It's, uh, pretty much a speed bump before it gets to the primary infiltration basin.
Anything else?
I would move that we accept the de minimis change for the Lunenburg Central project at 535 Shirley Road.
I second.
Excellent. Is there any further discussion? Um, okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. All right, thank you. Thank you. Yes, please. Um, so we're going to, oh, the second one's skipped anyway, so, um, no, so we're going to skip over, we're going to hold on Il Forno, so we'd like to just speak with you.
Yes. Thank you to the board. Thank you to the chair. Hello, Mr. Bernie.
How are you?
Great, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Uh, Valerio Romano for Uma Flowers. Um, so I guess, uh, am I, I'm correct that there's only three members of the board tonight? The others, others aren't on Zoom or something like that?
No, no, the, the chair called late and, um, our fifth member has recently had a, a child. Uh, I did communicate with him and he expects to be back at the next meeting most likely.
Okay, so, um, I would like to not open the public hearing then, which is what I presume that the, the consensus is. But I would like, if possible, flag this title issue that we sent a letter today. And I'm not even able to do that if we don't open the public hearing.
No, because you're, you're essentially giving testimony.
Okay.
And they've received the communications we were sent from, um, Mr. Ainsley.
Uh, so. Ian's here.
Yeah, they, they have the opportunity to review that between now and then.
And they'll incorporate that in the package of the submission.
Yeah, I mean, it went straight out to them once I, once it landed in my email. So they've got it, it's, it's in what's, uh, on the table in front of them this evening.
I defer to you, Adam.
And so I, I would prefer to have you say that you'd like to continue and, and we'll pick a date and we'll continue to that date.
We would like to continue to the next available date if possible. I think it's, is it 27? Yeah, if we can get on the agenda for that, we'd, we'd much appreciate it.
Okay, so I'd be looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to June 27th at 6:05.
So moved.
I second.
Second, um, okay, uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we'll talk soon, Adam.
Apologies.
Yeah, that's all right. Take care.
All right. So now we have a public hearing for 494 Electric Avenue, Il Forno, site plan approval.
I am looking to see if this is the correct, yes, okay. So now is when I do the reading thing, right?
Um, yes, are you, you presenting for this as well?
Yes.
So he's going to read the, he's going to read the hearing notice.
The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 13th, 2022, 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, MA, to hear and review an application for the site plan approval under Chapter 250, Section 8.4 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg for a freestanding detached structure to serve as an outdoor seating area at 494 Electric Avenue. Applicant owner is DNA Lun, uh, DNA Lunenburg LLC, 494 Electric Avenue, Lunenburg, MA. Materials are available for viewing at the playing office, 960 Mass Avenue, Lunenburg, MA.
Thank you.
Great, great. Uh, before we go too far, Adam, we got a message from, uh, the project attorney. He's having a hard time to sign, um, hearing.
You there, Jeff?
Yep, I'm in.
All right.
I'll be, hopefully you can hear me. Thank you.
All right, great. Uh, just for the record again, Chris Anderson with Handy and Engineering here in behalf of DNA Lunenburg LLC, uh, for a construction of a new, uh, building addition to an existing facility, uh, restaurant facility that's currently being utilized by the Il Forno Restaurant. Uh, this project was brought before the ZBA for a dimensional variance, um, back a few months ago. Uh, ZBA approved it, um, for the building addition. Uh, the purpose behind this building addition is to provide additional area for seating and service for the restaurant itself. Um, currently, there is an existing tent that was put up during the COVID restrictions, um, in order to keep the business, um, working and operational. Um, it provides an outdoor seating area during the warmer months, but it does not become, it's not functional or usable during the colder months. Um, as such, it's the intent to try to main, or maintain the same, um, spacing and seating arrangements currently there, providing additional space to expand into, uh, for the project itself. Currently, the tent right now is about a 30 by 60. Uh, the new building will be, uh, 30 by 50, so slightly smaller than what's there now. And it'll be located in the same general footprint as it, uh, the tent is currently. Um, the project won't increase, uh, or increase the capacity within the building, so it's essentially just adding additional floor area to expand and spacing, uh, for the tables and eatery areas. Um, and besides that, uh, it's pretty much it. Uh, the sole purpose behind coming before the board is because we did get a, a special permit from the ZB, or ZBA, um, so it is required by, uh, the bylaw to come before the board for a site plan approval. Um, that's pretty much it. If there's any questions from the board, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Okay. Um, so, can you, can, Adam, can you explain to me what the ZBA's relief?
Uh, it's a lot-line relief. It's a dimensional variation.
So?
For the, it's a special permit for dimensional variation because.
For the setbacks?
Yes.
Okay, that was going to be my first question.
Correct. The use is a, is a by right use. Um, the site plan approval is required because they're expanding the building footprint by 5,000 square feet or 25%, whichever is smaller. So the proposed addition is more than 25% of the existing building.
Was that addition relief?
No, that's the threshold that triggers site plan approval.
Okay.
Because it's not a use, they didn't get a use special permit. Um, they're expanding the building footprint.
Okay. Very good. Um, we also received a letter from, um, an abutter, um, which should be read into the record.
Sure.
Um, and, okay, so Town of Lunenburg, Mass, Planning Board Chairman Tanner Cole, "We are unable to attend tonight's Lunenburg Planning Board meeting and ask that this communication be read in support of Michael Mohammed, owner of Il Forno Restaurant, location 494 Electric Avenue, Lunenburg, Mass, regarding his application to make the tented area of the restaurant a permanent structure. We are the main abutters to this property, owning both 480 Electric Ave and 15 Kirby Ave. Mr. Mohammed has been a collaborative and respectful neighbor. He is a community-minded business owner who is considered of his neighbors and the community he serves. We have agreed in collaboration and at the request of neighbors to fence the back of 15 Kirby Ave between our properties. We are in support of Mr. Mohammed's application. Sincerely, Michael R. and Tammy D. Lovewell." So that's good. It's always good to have the neighbors in favor. Doesn't happen often.
And I, I did speak with Mr. Lovewell, uh, and he, his assertion, and I haven't had a chance to watch it, was that Mr. Mohammed agreed to the fence at the zoning board hearing, uh, and he wasn't concerned that this wouldn't happen. He just wanted to, uh, have it included as part of any, uh, discussion this evening.
Okay. And so that's, is, is that a residence or a business?
It's a car lot.
It's a car lot, so.
And then he owns the house behind it. He reached, recently purchased it. Um, the.
Now formerly Steven Chart?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, has there been any input from the other abut, abutting neighbor?
Uh, no, I do know that, um, the building commissioner and myself have met with Mr. Mohammed and his representatives over a number of years at this point, uh, maybe even going back to just before COVID. Uh, and I know that they did hold a neighborhood meeting. Uh, and I know that he has had probably individual conversations with most, if not all, of the neighbors. Uh, and I think that having, um, you know, no, no one showed up in opposition at the zoning board, to my understanding. And, uh, there are some folks here tonight, I don't know what their positions are, but, uh, the room isn't, it's not a groundswell of, of neighbors opposed, so.
And there is an existing fence? It, it looks like an existing fence shown?
Uh, yeah, I think it's seen possibly better days. Uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Lovewell was, uh, in the process of cleaning out that property, uh, both interior and exterior, and said that the, the backyard was in, um, a condition that needed some help, and he's, you know, looking for it. Uh, and his concern is, is in, in general, the potential light trespass from vehicles into, into that backyard. Uh, and, you know, a solid fence would, would solve that very quickly.
Okay. Um, I'll open it up. Anybody has any questions, comments?
So, we've heard from, support from the, from Mr. Lovewell, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the next lot to the right is, that's listed under Chartier. Is that?
That's also owned by that.
That's also owned by Lovewell. Okay, that's why, that's what I was, want to make sure understood.
Really? There's a stone wall in Whalim area? Wow.
Where do you see that?
Between Lovewells and the Il Forno.
Yeah, that's a, a landscape constructed.
Okay.
Stone wall, never mind.
It looks the same on the plan.
Yeah. It is made of stones, but it's, it's much more contemporary.
A farmer did not put them there.
No.
Actually, what we, what we should do, there's, there's what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven waivers?
Enormous amount of waivers.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So we should go through those. For impact reports, um, traffic storm, what, I assume you're asking for, really from all four, five?
Uh, yes, sir, because, um, the, the tent is effectively going into a previously disturbed area. Um, so the change from impervious to impervious is net zero. So there's not going to be any significant stormwater changes per se, uh, for that. Um, and there's really no other environmental areas within this general footprint just because of the nature of the developed portion of this, uh, of Electric Ave.
And this is not changing the capacity based on what's there now with the tent, is that correct?
Correct. So, um, the seating count will remain the same.
Yep.
You're just redistributing it through the building. So there's no additional sewage flows or anything like that, or any additional traffic. It's just expanding that built, into that building area just to create more spacing between seating and everything like that.
What is the number of seats?
Number?
Number of seats?
It's 178.
178?
Now, that, that's the permit for 178.
That's the fire, um.
So that's the building.
That's the fire code.
Occupancy. What's the number of seats?
I believe it was.
144.
Thank you.
So I, I will say it's, it's a little unusual not to even show the proposed structure. Um, there's no dimensions from the set, from the lines. Did they specify a setback, ZBA?
Oh, their permit is in there.
Oh, we'll get, we'll get the public comment, sure? We'll get to it. Thank you. Um, actually, we can, we can do public comment before we look at the waivers, right?
If we can, I'd, I'd love to hear public comment as early as possible to kind of frame my understanding.
Okay, yeah. Well, while Adam is looking for that, why don't we go ahead and, and open it up to public comment?
I'm worried about the parking.
Oh, if you could please just step up to the mic and, and state your name and address? That's okay, welcome.
My name is Linda Halcy. I live at 20 Pierce Ave in Lunenburg.
Okay.
Um, so I'm right behind. Um, I've seen quite a bit of issues of Mother's Day, that the parking comes into a residential. That's a business.
Right.
And they haven't really, you know, they're doing, the business plan is adding, um, they haven't always had this many other seats. So now they want to add so many seats. But what I've seen is people show up and they don't have adequate parking. And that, that's what makes me nervous. I, I live on the residential right behind them, and people just, they just park wherever they want. Yes, I cleared a space across the street from my house, but that's where my water comes in from Lemmonster Water. Um, so I get concerned, people parking there, they just, you know, they just want to do what they want. Um, I don't think a business should be able to park in a residential, especially in Lunenburg, Mass. Maybe in Boston or other. maybe in Boston or other big cities and stuff like that. They do have that big blank area that people could park in. And, and I would like him to make it more presentable for people to park there instead of down the road.
Can you point to the, the blank area that you're talking about on that plan?
Okay, I'm, I'm not very good at directions.
That's okay.
So, I'm here South, so... I'm not sure where Il Forno is on this. Like, that's their, and this is the building, so I'm like, I'm on 20 Pierce Ave. So, I'm like, right behind.
You're up at the top corner. Oh, I'm sorry, you're down at the bottom left corner by the easel.
Uh, no, I'm still, oh, so like?
Keep, keep coming diagonally from where you were pointing towards the, keep going down towards the bottom left corner. Keep going down, keep going down, keep going down. You're right around there.
Oh, okay.
Your, your two or three houses in from Kirby?
Residents, residents. So, they're, they're parking down right in front of my house. And, and I've cleared a spot, so like when I have family and friends come over when I need plowing, I park right across the street from my house. What I've noticed is people just accept and they just park there. Not that it's my property, but it's not his property either, and I don't feel that these people should be able to park there when they want. So, I want him to designate, um, there's a big blank area that little parking street use, overflow parking. It's, it's a big sand, like, right across the street from my house.
Well, but Mr. Mohammed doesn't own that, so he can't require?
He doesn't own across the street from my house, but like I said, I've already had one leak through my house from my pipe. My pipe shut off is right across the street from my house in the parking area. So, if somebody parks and they go too far, they're gonna hit my brake, and then I have to pay for the money to have that fixed. I don't feel, that's, that's residential, just like that. He doesn't own my road either, so I don't think that he should be able to have people park on Pierce Ave because it's residential. He doesn't own across the street from my house, neither do I. He doesn't own that parking lot. He wants to have a whole bunch more people coming in, but he doesn't have the parking that should be there.
So, I, I understand that point. From the perspective of Pierce Ave, it's a public road. Owned by all the taxpayers of the town of Lunenburg. And their traffic rules and orders don't prevent parking on public roads, save a designated list.
Yeah, I kind of figured that's what you were gonna say.
And so, we can't, I guess you could approach the select board, as they are the road commissioners, to start a residential sticker parking program, but I think that's probably not something they're gonna be?
Which is funny, too, is because either I've talked to you and I know I didn't have a good conversation. The parking across my house, nobody could have parked there because it was bad. I had, somebody helped me and I cleaned it all out, so when it snows, I can park there so I can shovel my driveway. Well, then, now I'm losing that parking because you guys have pushed me to, and now I'm gonna have these cars going to the restaurant up and down my street. Am I gonna be back out of my driveway? You know, are these people gonna stay late and they're coming to their cars? It's a residential road. I don't think that a business should be able to park down a residential road, especially in Lunenburg, Massachusetts. It's not Boston, we're not in the big city. We're, we're in a little small town, and I don't think it's fair to...
I'm not telling you that you shouldn't feel that way. I'm telling you that the laws that we have in place don't give me or?
Well, then, I'm not gonna elect that he should be able to build another building that elects more people to go in there because then he doesn't have the parking.
Well, I mean, the three individuals to my left are the ones who are, are making that vote, so I'm, again?
Well, I think it's wrong that he should have a building that, that has so many people that can go in there, but they don't have the parking that can provide. I think it's unfair.
I'm merely providing you information?
I know, I understand that, and, but I?
That they have to work with when they make their decision.
I'm pointing out my view that if somebody owns a restaurant, they should put up with the parking that should be available for that many tables.
Sure. Thank you.
All right.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Pub, yeah, public comment?
As far as?
Please, please, please step up to the mic, so the?
We had spoken. I'm creating, I already contact Wasarza signs. They're making a signs for no parking to go, even it's not my authority to tell people not to park, but we're making a sign exactly right across from Linda's house. When she clear the two spots across the street for herself, to put a sign there to tell people they're not allowed to park. And the sign is ready, and, but just, I was waiting for the time to put it up. But I'm addressing the issue for her to, not to bother as much as we can. Mother Day was an exception day. Mother Day, everybody, every single restaurant in the country does business that day. I wish every day is a Mother Day, but Mother Day happened once a year. And sometimes it's a time for us to do some business. There's no way to control the parking outside. I did myself. I went outside in the parking lot. I was controlling, I was directing traffic and helping everybody to go their directions, not to leave the cars nearby, the resident, the neighborhoods, or to bother anybody. That's one thing. And also, we close at 9 o'clock at night. So, it's a family restaurant. 8 o'clock we close in the regular days. On the weekends, we close at 9 o'clock. So, nobody stays late, no cars hanging around later than 9 o'clock. Just in, in consideration later night when people got, not to our restaurants. Everybody comes in, they eat, and they leaves. They come in, in the weekdays, 8 o'clock wouldn't take nobody in the restaurant, so it's 9 o'clock on the weekends.
Okay.
So, we try to help that issue as much as we can. And I was just saying, the sign is gonna be ready, and we'll put it right there if it's not bothering her so much, and we can take care of it.
So, as far as putting up signs, excuse me, if it's not on your property, then it probably should be put up by DPW, right?
I, I shouldn't, but, you know, just try to please our neighbor.
Okay. Well, I, I really do think that DPW should step up and, and represent this road. It is, it is a public road? Is it, is it fully, is it fully paved?
Yes.
Well, it's questionable? Yeah, I, I thought it was questionable. And, and you have confirmed that, well, I mean, Pierce Ave is on the road list that's accepted? Okay. Yeah, there's, there's issues with the parking. I mean, he, there, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 spots that aren't even on the property, but this is existing non-conforming. We can't really correct that. It, it's a potential hazard for Electric Ave for those additional spots, but it, it's pretty wide. And it's been that way forever.
I think Electric Ave is a 70-foot right of way there.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and the, the sign itself is not even on the property. But those are, those are existing features that, that we, that this process can't really do anything about. However, the parking is something that we can bring up because the, how many seats was?
134.
134, that total?
Yes.
And is that what our parking bylaw requires? By seat or by table?
Our parking bylaw is by seat.
I believe it's one per 3 seats. So, that equates to 48 parking spaces. There's currently 48 on the site.
Currently 48 shown. One of them's impacted by the tent.
134 by 3 is 46, 45.
Oh, then you've got 3 extras.
Well, it also requires a space for each employee on the larger shift.
That's true.
Now, in the ZBA, Mr. Mohammed said that Mr., the Lovewells allow his employees to park there after 4 o'clock in the car lot. Mr. Lovewell was in attendance, so I expect if that were inaccurate, it would have been refuted. And that did not reflect in the record, so, you know, the board can take from that what they will.
Okay.
It's a pre-existing condition.
Exactly.
They're not increasing the seating capacity. They're increasing the floor space. I don't know that that would be a change to the pre-existing condition, other than the spacing of the tables. So, I, again, you know.
Okay.
It, it, it's an issue in and of itself, but not an issue that I think was created by the current business owner.
Sure.
Is the fact that we'd be losing parking spaces permanently, does that change the pre-existing non-conforming?
It looks like we'd lose one potentially because, but we can't tell that, and it's already been lost because the tent's there, but...
Yeah, it's, the one space near the tent gets a little bit truncated based on the layout. So, effectively, you're looking at 47 space instead of 48, unless a small car or motorcycle parks there.
It might fit the compact requirement, but, I mean, we, again, really what we're talking about is employee parking. And at the time that this restaurant was permitted, excuse me, the parking calculations for a restaurant were done by table. And it was one space per table. So, I would be surprised if there were 48 tables in there at one time. So, there was an excess of parking. And now they meet the parking requirements for diners. The issue is we added employee parking. Again, we're not talking about a massive expansion here. We're talking about a relatively, so I, it's a difficult situation. There is some space behind the building where it looks like you could squeeze a few cars in, but, again, I don't know that, that that's not already being used.
True. So, is there any additional public comment? Please. Long time no see.
Nice to see you, everybody. My name is Dave Rogers. I live at 82 Highland Street in Lunenburg. And I'm here to support the application of Michael Mohammed and Il Forno's restaurant. Much has been said of late regarding the need for commercial entities to locate in Lunenburg. I view this as a win-win situation because the, the entity is here already. And all they want to do is work within the confines that they have. And I think the owner has, time and time again, said, and he backs it up, that he will, will be a good neighbor, and he has been a good neighbor. I think the previous speaker has some concerns, which, which I understand. I truly do. But it's for a very short period of time, and as they used to say, you don't build a church for Easter Sunday. And it's one of those things that can be worked out, and it has been in the past. I've lived here for 50 years and frequented the place with all the owners, as you can tell. That was a joke, folks. So, the, the point is, it's a win-win for, for everybody because the, the town receives more income from the, the sales tax aspect from a, a successful restaurant. The area in question is not more than is there, it's less, okay? The seating capacity, I think, I'm sorry, what was the?
134.
134, and that hasn't changed, correct?
That was what's represented.
Right. So, the, the point is, all we have to do is, is work this out on peak cap, uh, capacity times. And I think it's standard knowledge that Mr. Mohammed gives a, a wonderful luncheon for the elderly at the holiday time, and there's a plethora of parking, and it's all worked out. You know, we move the, the people around, and, and the benefits certainly outweigh the inconveniences that people have to endure for an hour or two. So, the bottom line is that I think that the reputation of Mr. Mohammed has preceded him. He does what he says. He's a good neighbor, he's a good business person, and he's good for the economy and for the town. And he has demonstrated that he will bend over backwards to help, as evidenced by the sign and the kinds of things that they talked about, which I think can be worked out if we all just understand what the situation is. And I wholeheartedly support this expansion for all the reasons that I've outlined, and hope that this board will act favorably on the request of Michael Mohammed and Il Forno Restaurant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Okay. Seeing none, and we, we need to address the waiver requests. We can continue to talk about the public comment concern, or do that, however you folks would like to do. I, for one, actually would like to just state that I don't think that this is appropriate for site plan review if the existing tent is larger and there's a permanent structure proposed. I think that we should have a plan that, that, that shows the permanent structure that is proposed with offsets to the property lines and offsets to the existing building because we've got setbacks from buildings on site, too, right?
Oftentimes.
But let's, uh, let's get to the waiver requests so that we can help, help you fill out that list. So, the impact reports. The seating apparently has not changed. The tent has been up for 2 years, is that correct? 2 years?
Correct, since the COVID timeframe.
2 years. And I'm not aware of any incidents reported. So, I mean, basically, the capacity is not changing, which would, you know, the, the traffic, the fiscal, the environmental, the community probably wouldn't change. The stormwater is the only thing with the existing tent. It's still gonna be probably considered clean runoff?
I was gonna say, you're probably going from mottled, unclean because there's pavement underneath to mottled clean because it's a rooftop.
Right. I mean, so even, even?
Yeah. So, to that point, yeah, there's currently pavement there that was utilized for parking for many eons. Obviously, that's a much more higher pollutant load, just by the nature of the function of it. Buildings, we don't see that, obviously, because it's, nothing's on top of it that leaks oils or coolant or drops sand and salt on it. So, it's substantially cleaner, impervious. It's a nicer impervious, for lack of a better term, than you see typically in more impervious other areas.
Okay. So, are there any questions or comments on the traffic, on the impact reports?
I don't believe I do, no.
Okay.
I don't see much changing.
So, since there's 7, why don't we just go through them and see if there's any we don't like? And if there are, then we can exclude them from approval of?
Yep.
Makes sense?
That's what I was gonna say.
So, the 40-scale plan, obviously, it would be smaller on this plan because this is at 30 scale. So, I don't think that's, it's, it's in our bylaw. It's a requirement for the submission. And this is, this is actually better than if it was, because it would be smaller.
Yep.
Everybody agree on that?
Yes.
Yes.
The utility info. Now, did I hear you say that there's not gonna be sewer attached to the building? Will there be water and electric probably?
Electric, yes. That's gonna be coordinated with units here when we get to that portion of the projects. And I believe water will not be attached to this as well. All the utility connections will be maintained through the primary building still.
No water? Okay. Now, the utility, the electric, the electric is the only utility, you said?
Uh, yeah, so we wouldn't need that. Yeah, so we wouldn't need that, and I believe, yeah.
Would that be underground?
Most likely not, yes.
Is this considered the new construction, that we require underground utilities?
Probably not, because it's an expansion of an existing building. I also don't expect that they're going to pull power directly from the pole, they might...
Yeah, no, so there's the one meter already at the building, there's going to tap into that, so...
They'll be pulling off the existing meter, so...
That makes no sense, right?
Yeah.
So, it will probably be in the slab that they pour, so it will be underground, but it'll just be coming from the meter as opposed to the pole.
Okay. Does anybody have concern about that? We can waive the utility info?
Yeah.
Yeah? Tree info, I don't think there are a lot of trees out there on this site.
No, there's not many trees on the site, it's pretty much a paved jungle, for lack of a better term.
And all of these spots have been previously existing, and this was previously existing before, it was Al Forno, right? The parking has not changed since you've bought the place? So, is that appropriate?
Yeah, I think so.
Traffic info, again, it's not an increase in capacity, it's just an increase in size, so technically, it should not be an increase in trips?
Yeah.
Correct? Is that true?
Correct, sorry.
That's fine. Okay, photometric plan, so photometric plan, do you, do we all know what a photometric plan is?
No.
Okay, good, that's why, so a photometric plan, basically, is something that shows the light intensity of light fixtures on the property, and we've got, we're dark sky compliant?
We are.
And basically, you don't want to have excess light flooding onto the neighbor's property, especially with the rural conditions adjacent. Is there going to be any proposed change in lighting?
No, sir, so the lighting around the building will remain the same, there'll probably be a small security light somewhere in the parking area along the new building, just for security purposes. The area's pretty well-lit already, so there's really no need to provide any more standalone poles on the site.
Okay, so there's no proposed additional exterior lighting?
Standalone lights, yes, yeah.
So, is...
Any lights on the building that have to be dark sky compliant, downward-facing wall pack?
Yeah.
I mean, which is pretty standard at this point.
Yeah, no, if the board feels comfortable making a condition that all wall pack lights be dark sky compliant, and comply, and consistency with the bylaw, that's not going to be a significant issue.
Okay. So, photometric plan, no, architectural elevations. Architectural elevations, I can't imagine it's going to look worse than a big white tent in the parking lot. I can't imagine that it's going to. So, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that's all of them, isn't it? Oh, no, it's not, not applicable, so, construction details, erosion, sedimentation control. There should be some temporary erosion and sedimentation control, just to keep debris from leaving the construction area, shouldn't there?
For this kind of a construction, the most, the only real earth-disturbing activities that are happening are when you're putting in the foundation, it's a slab foundation, so there's only going to be a four-foot frost wall, so excavation's not going to be significant, typical what the board might expect for, like, subdivision or larger development, so a lot of the soils are not going to be generated of another typical project of the sort, but we can always provide live-loading for the soils, it's a small site already, there's not a lot of places to put it, so most of the excavation that does happen will probably have to be live-loaded and removed from the site as necessary, and any other areas, we can make sure that they're erosion-controlled, protected around the stockpiles, but there's not going to be an open pit of earth that the board might be expecting, so we can easily address that with during construction mitigation measures, not just stockpile erosion-control measures.
Okay, now, how much of the drainage, does the front of the site drain towards electric half?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, there's catch basins, there's very little impervious, everything is structure and pipe for stormwater out here, so...
And to be frank, I don't remember where the next catch basin is down gradient of the site, but during construction, if it does become an issue, we can work with DPW and put silt sacks and provide additional mitigation measures with an electric half, but off the top of my head, I'm not a hundred percent certain how far down that, down the road it goes, so we can look into that.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would, I would, I would hope that you could get at least one silt sack, a silt sack in the first...
First one down the stream, yeah.
That's what I would, I would prefer. And I suppose if we get your word that that would happen, that would be effective and efficient?
In condition that they put a silt sack in the first catch basin.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're writing that down?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, thank you. So, construction details and erosion, they're not typically something that we would waive for new construction, but, I guess honestly, I don't have an issue unless anybody's got something.
I, I guess, and I don't know, I don't know exactly what falls under construction details, I'm still unclear on exactly what is being built, other than a replacement for the tent.
So...
And I don't know, is the, do we normally have more info than that during a site plan approval? If the answer's no...
It's both yes and no. So, normally, the construction details would be things like the catch basins, the manholes, the vegetated swales, the parking lot sections, the sidewalk sections, the, how you lay the curb, how the signs are getting put in, what the landscape details are, all the things that aren't being done on this site. Essentially, what's being built is a slab foundation, and then they're going to bring in an erector set and put a building up. My, did you order a Morton building?
Did I get them, sorry?
Did you order a Morton building?
Not yet.
But that's what you're...
That's...
So...
So, there's no major construction.
Yeah, Morton is a, is a prefab, it's a brand name, it's like Kleenex, but it's a prefab building, so it'll be metal, and it's going to come in in pieces, and the crew from Morton's going to come and ch-ch-ch-ch, and put it up, and they're going to anchor it to the foundation, and then they're going to put it together, for lack of a better term, and then they're done. So, it's, it's all controlled construction, so the, the majority of site work is going to be within the foundation, and then it's going to be blending whatever, I don't know if you're going to pull a coat over the parking lot, or if you're just going to blend the edges, or whatever, but then making the parking lot meet with it, probably with some new botuminous and some guy with a laser to melt it all together, so it looks nice and doesn't have a seam, and, so, there, the construction is just the foundation.
Okay.
The rest of it is already there.
And the foundation, just correct me if I'm wrong, is dictated by building code?
Correct.
Correct. So, really, that's beyond us, anyway.
Okay, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to have...
Yes, so in general, we would have a whole bunch of stuff about everything that's happening around the building, which they're not doing, because it's all there.
Right.
And the building would just be a box, and they would say, we're going to put this box here, and it's going to be a building that looks like this picture, and then they would go and have their contractor or architect put together a set of plans that the building inspector would see and review for, is the foundation deep enough, is it going to, you know, is it designed in a way that's going to hold this building, is the building designed in a way that it's not going to fall down, and that's all, all building code stuff.
Yeah, all right, that all makes sense to me, thank you.
Okay, so are we, are we in agreement that we, we can waive the construction details and the erosion sedimentation?
I'm comfortable with that.
Given the condition that the silt sack goes in the first downstream. Now, since there is, and a butter's still with us, is that correct? Can I ask you if you have any problems with any of those requests?
Me?
Yes.
Um, who's listening?
If you do, I'd ask you to step to the microphone again.
I can say anything if the stomach asks.
Okay, very good, thank you.
But I will look more deep into it.
Well, this is your last chance before we actually grant the waiver requests.
As soon as you guys are all over, so I don't think anything I could say is...
Oh, no, okay, so these are, yeah, these are not unusual requests for a project this size, so it's not uncommon for us to do stuff like this. Okay, thank you. So, we are in, all in agreement that the, all the requests asked for are appropriate?
Aye.
So, then I guess I'll, I'll ask for a motion to approve the waiver requests for impact reports, forty-scale drawings, utility info, tree info, traffic info, photometric plan, architectural elevations.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have accepted the waiver requests. What, it said there was a fee for the peer review, is that in here?
That would be another waiver with...
No, they've asked for a waiver from peer review.
Oh!
Because they're not...
I misunderstood what that X means. I did, I did as well. So, there is one more. I'm not, I'm a little bit skeptical about waiving the peer review, what are your thoughts and feelings on that?
I mean, generally, the peer review is for the review of hydrology, engineering designs, parking lot layout, the, and, and for follow-up on the construction of all those items, none of which is occurring in this, this proposal.
Okay.
I mean, this is, for all intents and purposes, the construction of a building. I don't think that there's anything that would require a peer review, the board has come to the conclusion that hydrologically, the project, the project site isn't changing, and is actually probably improving with the addition of clean runoff, in place of what would have potentially been, potentially contaminated runoff, that the parking is not going to be laid out differently, the traffic pattern is not going to be altered or increased based on the retention of the existing number of seats. I don't know if you sent this to Graves, that they would have anything to review.
Okay. Very good, does, how does everybody feel about waiving the peer review?
I'm com, I am comfortable waiving peer review.
I agree.
Okay, so then I need a motion to waive the peer review.
I would mo, I would move to waive the peer review.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, excellent. Okay, so we've covered that, there is no engineering review, the stormwater has submitted some information. Is, did storm, did sewer have any input?
I thought that, yeah, I think that you have a copy of it.
Just confirm the permanent structure increase of the restaurant's seat.
So, did you attend the, oh, okay, so we're waiting for confirmation from the building commissioner, that the sewer, there won't be an increase in sewer flows for the commission, and so I think what that, I'm not sure how the building commissioner would confirm that, what my recommendation would be, that this board condition the approval of site plan on one hundred and thirty-four seats, as that's what the applicant has indicated, he currently has and intends to continue to have, and then that becomes an enforceable zoning condition that the building commissioner can enforce if it is over that, and should give the commission confidence that there won't be an increase in flows.
Okay, can you write that condition down as well? Thank you. So, are there any other outstanding issues aside from the site plan approval?
Just to the chair, I think one of the waivers that we also requested was relative to the datums on the plans, where you're just using a presumed datum, vertical and horizontal, so it's more of a clerical thing, it's a small project, as we said before, so it's a minor impact, but it's requested that we grant, the board grant a waiver for keeping the thing on, or the plan set on a known datum.
That's not on this list, is it, Adam?
It's in your letter, it's in the letter by the applicant.
So, should we add that to the list as well?
Uh...
It's not the first time we've had that request.
Correct, yeah, well, we'll, we'll add it to our list.
This is one of the few times that I'm going to say that'd be okay, though, because that's...
Well, I was, I was going to say, I think in, in this instance, where there are not utility connections, there's not a concern or review of parking lot connections, the datum is functionally irrelevant to the approval of this plan, because they're not going to build the foundation higher or lower than it needs to be, because they're going to be standing there on site and be able to line it up by eye, if not transit, and so normally, that datum is, is used as part of stormwater and as part of wastewater, to ensure that pipe flows are meeting accurately, and that inverts and elevations are working together, so I, I don't see a significant issue with, with waiving it on this particular project.
Okay, and the request is for horizontal and vertical, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, does everybody know what that means?
I would like some more explanation.
Okay, so, datums, basically, when they give an elevation, it's typically like above sea level?
Yep.
Like, but when you're doing a site, they'll, they'll pick a spot and say, this is X, and then everything is X plus or X plus, and then that's for a vertical, and then horizontal, the typical reason we require a horizontal datum is for the GIS systems, because if they give us something that's on a different horizontal datum, then it's not going to come, snap into the GIS that we have, and so basically, that's, you, you go ahead and explain that for us.
There are different, there are different sets of data, from different years, that use different fixed points as a starting point, and so the way that you calculate length and height between those varies, I think twenty-nine and eighty-five are the two big ones right now?
Twenty-nine and eighty-four, or, eighty-four horizontal, eighty-eight vertical.
Yeah.
But it's effectively trying to figure out a way to put around surface, the earth, onto a flat piece of paper.
Yep.
So, each state has their own grid system, you have the overall globe, the longitude, latitudes, that we all learned back in geography class, but typically, for projects like, or larger projects, like I was before you, earlier, that's put onto the state plane system, so it's a known coordinate system based on the Massachusetts datum, so some people higher powered than I decide that this point over here is point zero, and over here is point one, whatever you want to say, and everything in the whole entire state's based around that. And the vertical datum is effectively, like it was said, is based around sea level, but obviously, sea level changes, and the difference between the older twenties, twenties versus the eighties calculates that change, and the fact that the earth does its moving and up and down thing, so, a lot of complex math, but effectively, it's just stating a point zero for everything horizontally, vertically. That's a surveying class 101.
And that would, that would also be an additional bill to the client?
Yes.
So...
Yeah.
So, I guess we need a motion to waive the vertical and horizontal datum requirement?
So, moved.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Very good. So I guess that wraps up the stuff you've asked for, right, pretty much?
Yes, sir.
And then, so the last thing is the parking. Is, is it gonna be a great expense, or, I mean, can you do it within the next two weeks to get the proposed building with setbacks and?
Um, I don't see an issue with doing that. We can get that easily attached, or provide to the plan set, um, and have it ready by the next meeting.
Okay, and would that hold you up? You're trying to do this for winter time anyway, right? So that, two more weeks? Okay, sure. Now, I just wanna, I just wanna have a plan that shows the proposed building and the, the setbacks from the lot lines and the setbacks from the existing building, so that we can confirm they conform to our, well, not the sidelines, because they got the ZBA relief.
They got the ZBA relief on all of it.
From setback from the existing building?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
I believe so, too.
You believe so?
There's no numbers in the, it just says, go ahead and build it.
Okay. I guess, uh, I guess that's kinda moot, then.
Uh, I, I think that, well, even if they approve it this evening, they still need, I still need to write the decision.
Correct.
And I still need to bring it to them to sign. I think it would be appropriate to have a plan set that shows the building, so they can sign that as well, just so there's a record of what they're approving.
Yep, that makes sense.
The, there's a couple of different ways we can do it. I certainly am not going to infer what you folks plan to do this evening, but what the, the board has made a practice of doing is when they feel that they have all the information and all the testimony, they'll close the hearing, they'll instruct me to write a draft decision, and at the next available meeting, they will review the draft decision, deliberate and vote, and sign the decision in the same evening.
Yep.
And so timing-wise, that doesn't change anything for the applicant, because they're still gonna have to wait to sign the decision for two weeks anyway. And what, if they were to do it that way, we could incorporate the date of that plan into the final decision, and everything can get signed and we can kind of go on our happy way. But ultimately, the board makes that choice, not me.
Any other input?
No.
No.
So, to address, to address the butters' concerns, um, can we, can we get some input from DPW on the parking situation?
You can. I'm, you know, the DPW director's been here about a month now. I don't know what it looks like getting that turned around, as far as getting himself up to speed and, and, you know, providing comment in the midst of paving season hitting full swing. I'm happy to reach out to him and, and have that discussion. I think ultimately what it comes down to is it's a public road that doesn't have a parking prohibition. And if the individual who lives there were concerned and did approach the board about a parking prohibition, they create a situation that is more detrimental to themselves than the current one. I've, I've had a conversation with that abutter, uh, which she referenced. I think that the fact that I wasn't able to provide her the answer that she wanted put a foul taste in her mouth. I, I don't, you know, Mr. Mohammed has offered to put that sign up, I can talk to the DPW director about that. Again, it goes back to, it's an unenforceable sign that is on the town's property.
Isn't it like the one at Asian Imperial?
Yep.
How is that unenforceable?
It's not, well, first of all, the state controls that portion of the intersection, because it's within five hundred feet of a state-controlled road.
Okay.
In order for the ro- and, you know, Asian, actually, that portion of Electric Avenue may have been deemed, um, no parking, but you can't just put up a no parking sign and have the police enforce it. It needs to have the rule of law behind it, which in, in Lunenburg means being adopted by the select board as part of the parking prohibited list.
Oh, I don't remember that coming up before. That was unenforceable.
The one at Asian, I, I mean, clearly no one enforces it if you ever go by there.
Clearly, but I guess.
But that's really neither here nor there. But again, I, I think the issue is not that she wants that area signed no parking, she wants it to be specifically for her use because the amount of effort she put in to clean up property that wasn't hers. And I understand putting that effort in and, and feeling a sense of ownership and pride. I, I empathize with her, I just don't know that I have any legal authority to give her permission to tell other people that they can't use
Sure.
Not her property.
And through the chair, um, my understanding is that, yes, there's a certain days of the year that there is a, abnormally a large amount of traffic, that's the exception to the rule. And Mr. Mohammed has already, you know, agreed to, you know, try to control it privately, the traffic mitigation or parking mitigation, or however you wanna put it. So I think, um, ultimately that would, ultimately fall onto the requirement of the landowner or Mr. Mohammed to control that. Obviously, if there's a safety concern or anything like that, that's an entirely different situation where the police and the fire would have to be enforcing that. Seeing how this is not the constant day-to-day activity that the site experiences, I think trying to control that one day out of the year inhibits and makes the functionality of the site for Mr. Mohammed's day-to-day more cumbersome. So I think, um, if the board's okay with the, you know, per- private, uh, mitigation, the signage, trying to control the, the patrons, saying, hey, where did you park? Did you park over near this lady's house? Yes, no? Please move your car, um, closer to the restaurant. Uh, there's, you know, as we said earlier, zoning, we tend, we have the required parking, so it's gonna cover the day-to-day, um, and then on those special occasions, it's just private mitigation for those couple days of the year.
How long has, uh, I mean, how, how long has this site been a restaurant of this size?
I think it goes back to the mid-eighties. Does that sound about? Oh, does it go all the way back? Okay.
That's, I, that's my point, is
Yeah.
Really ain't new.
No, no, I, I, yes.
When Kathy was there back then, that was the listed date, and extremely you could see the traffic was still around the same time, nobody ever complained. And again, as Chris says, another day comes once a year. And, uh, I'm more than willing to stand by and help situation if there's any parking issue. I go out and I drive the customers' cars to get them my own spot. In the back of the restaurant, the loading dock, we receive orders twice a week. The loading dock area, we can do twelve cars right there. No problem, problem whatsoever. Mister Labo, on the weekends, we park our cars right there with no issues. You know, most of the times, most of the times, we still have parking spots available for customers.
Sure.
Other day was a crazy day, and it happened in every single restaurant again in the country. That's the day where every restaurant gets busy.
And, and I, and I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not trying to, it, it certainly sounds like you are working as best you can to mitigate the situation that's there. I'm just sort of responding to what the, the board has asked about how, how they codify this, or, or how they put this into, into the decision in a way that protects you, protects them, and, and sort of resolves this situation as best we can.
Well.
Many, many issues, and again, more than willing to call, we're willing to send the air officer.
Sure.
Wherever we can to solve the problem with no issue whatsoever.
Oh, sure, no, I, I have no doubt in whatsoever that you have nothing but the best of intentions. I love your restaurant, I've been there multiple times, uh, and, and I've, I've been there. I've also been in South. Of, of course.
With COVID, we're learning a lot right now.
Sure.
When some situations will come back, what we're doing is spreading tables, leaving space for the customer, give them some space, make it safe, safe for our staff, safe for everybody. It works, it's one way for all of us.
Yep.
Not just for the restaurant.
No, this is certainly, this is not about you, actually, uh, and Adam didn't even mention it, but this, this is primarily, the questions I'm asking are for the resident that came to speak. And we, we don't get a lot of people to come to these meetings, and when we do, we'd like to take their, their opinions. And, you know, there's, there's, there's nothing you can do with the site. You've only got so much land, it's not, it's not, it's not my concern about you, it's just, is there a way that we can facilitate this any better? And that's, that's all it is. I'm sorry, um, I really should've asked you to come to the microphone before, but if, if you wanna continue speaking, I'd love to have you come to the microphone so that the audience.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
You know, she declared a small part across the street, the cut the trees, I guess, or declared those, you know, the brushes and stuff, and they made like two parking spots. And more than willing not to go by or any, any of these issues whatsoever, to create any of that. That's why I offer to make the sign, and even I called my sign guy, and they're already working on it, just to be a good neighbor.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not gonna go tell her, hey, this is, uh, uh, our taxpayers' money, our tax money, and I, I have all the right, people have the right, I can't argue that way. And she, they think it's their right to have these two parking spots for the guests, when they have a guest coming by. And I even, I, I, if they wanna park in my, her guest, if I have a parking spot for them, they can come in to park in, in a restaurant. Who would ever know, anyway? Who's coming and who's going?
Sure.
And I, there's something I cannot control, uh, if someone of the customers go, and, and whoever parked there, it's gotta be someone from the neighborhoods, knows the area, and feel comfortable enough to go there and park their cars. And I don't think it happened, it happened only once.
Sure.
That's, that's all it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I, I've heard nothing but, but glorious glowing reviews of the establishment. Yes, please, anything else?
So, it, the plant, for the resident with a concern, or any resident in the area with a concern about parking, the proc- for that, that's outside of our jurisdiction, correct? Yes. If they had a concern, where would, where would they go? And that would, sounds like the answer is go to the select board, correct?
Well, but if they get a parking ban in the street, they're gonna shoot themselves in the foot, because they won't be able to park on the street either.
Oh, uh, Matt, Mr. Allison, I agree a hundred percent, but I, I want, I feel for the sake of giving people information that they can.
Yes, the parking, any parking prohibitions would be through the select board as road commissioners.
Okay. So that would, and I know that's been stated, stated in other contexts, but I just want that really as a standalone. They have a next step if they want, and it's outside of our hands, we can work with what's here. And what's here seems to meet all the requirements.
All right, so, um, I guess the last point is one that I raised about having the proposed building shown on the plan that we approved with setbacks. Uh, how do you guys feel about that?
I would normally say yes, but it, it sounds like, I mean, has the ZBA said setbacks just don't matter here?
They, they said, yeah, they said it can essentially go where it is. If, if you were to go out there and survey it, you know, we're probably in the one-to-five foot range
Yeah.
On, on the close lot lines that they're gonna be at. They might make ten feet on the property line on the Kirby side, depending on how they situate the building. I would expect you're gonna pull it closer to the restaurant rather than push it further away, so that you, you know, people going in and out to the bathroom and servers and stuff. So it's really that rear property line where they're gonna run into this issue, and it's gonna be one, one to five feet, uh, and maybe like twelve feet on the Kirby side. So, the ZBA essentially said, you can put it up, and you can, you just need to stay on your property and you'll be fine.
I believe also within the confines of that existing town.
Which is.
Yeah. There's not much of an option.
Which is kind of a sloppy measure, maybe.
Has, doesn't have really much of an option, but it's effectively in the footprint of that town. So, uh, like Mr. Bernie had said, it's gonna be within that confine, it might be split the difference between everything, just to get enough of a walkway between the building and the new structure. But you'll be a few feet further away from the Love Well side, probably. The width of the building is not gonna change, it's gonna be thirty, thirty, it's only the depth that changes, it's going from sixty to fifty.
If the ZBA says there's nothing to track, I, I don't feel like there's anything we have to track, but by the same token, I, I, I hear what you said, Adam, about, um, I really feel like there's supposed to be something on record saying, this is what we approved. But I'd like something, I guess, but what Adam said about having it at the late, at the end of the process, I don't know, that bothers me, I think that's probably fine by my reckoning, reckoning. But if you disagree, Matt, I'd love to hear your thoughts on it.
Well, I, I've run into this problem before, where ZBA says, okay, they just say, okay, and they give us this basket, and then we have to unpack this basket, and we eventually have to say, okay, but, um, it's the unpacking of the basket that causes us problems sometimes.
Keep with that analogy, this basket's a little less full than some of the ones they've sent you.
Most definitely, most definitely. So what, what's the difference between continuing the hearing and closing the hearing?
Well, closing the hearing, uh, just prevents new testimony.
So we should probably continue it, so?
That would be the, yeah, so then you can just incorporate the plan, uh, and I can write the decision, and you can wrap everything up at the next meeting.
So you can draft what we've already put together now and, and then edit it and print it up?
Yep. And, and I mean, there shouldn't be too much editing needed, it's not like there's a lot of complex issues and
Right.
Conditions, uh, and I expect I'll remove a fair amount of the standard conditions, because a lot of them revolve around stormwater and stuff, which aren't, isn't something that needs to happen here.
There's still residential butters, right?
There are.
Okay, so the times and whatnot. And it is in residence, isn't it?
It's split-zoned, is it not?
I know this would be located within the residence area.
Okay. That's right, CBS was the last property that got commercial designation.
Yep.
All right, um, does it matter to you whether we continue or close?
I don't see an issue with that, I, we can easily add a, um, the building to the plan, just so the board is at least aware it's going in this location.
Sure.
So it's not a surprise, once the building's up.
Okay.
I don't feel like that'd be an issue.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to continue the hearing, so that we can get any, any additional input, uh, from other members, if they do come, hopefully. So is, is that okay to continue?
Yeah.
Do we need to have them request it, or just having them say it's okay?
I, I mean, that, I, you can ask them to request that you can take that as okay, and you can continue. I mean, there's no timeframes, so you're not battling against a clock.
So we need a motion to continue the public hearing?
Move to continue the public hearing for four ninety-four Electric Avenue to?
Twenty-seven June six oh five.
June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, at six oh five PM.
I will second that.
Excellent, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, too. Thank you. Don't be a stranger, Mr. Rogers.
Sir?
Don't be a stranger, Mr. Rogers.
I know. I've got to have the best of health and taken all low-key.
I've heard.
Your COVID and stuff.
Best of wishes.
I appreciate that. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm bringing classics.
It's about time, huh? Glad you didn't say that to Mike, though. Okay, so that wraps up, oh, and the Northfield Road, Holman Street, stormwater permit, just for the viewing audience, has asked for a continuance. That's correct?
Yes, so you'll need a motion and.
Oh, okay. So we do need to do something.
And we just move to continue?
Yeah, they've asked till 27 June as well.
I would move to continue the Northfield Road and Holman Street stormwater permit to June 27, 2022 at 6:05 PM.
I will second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. So that is continued. Our next group is minutes approval. We've got.
We don't have to do anything about UMA because they didn't start, so.
Well, you continued them, yeah. They asked to be continued.
Okay. I'm not very smart.
No, that's all right.
It's easy to get.
You focus on something, yeah.
I mean, you've been, you've been thinking about parking in Chicken Parm for the last hour or so.
Veal parm for me, but. Oh, not veal, no, eggplant, eggplant. Can't blame me, said veal. So minutes approval, we've got those in our packets. Oh, I didn't realize. Is that, is that a member of the audience?
No, that's me.
Linda?
Oh, yeah, she's been, she has not done, she has not raised her hand.
Okay, good. So.
Yep. I, can we approve them all at?
You can.
Call?
Yeah, you just gotta state them separately, but yeah.
Okay. I would move to approve the minutes from May 23, 2022 for the board reorganization committee reassignments for the public hearing for 245 Holman Street and for the public hearing for 260 Fallula Road.
Was that first one okay?
And he said for the meeting of?
Uh, yeah, I think I did.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
I will second that.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All of, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have approved our minutes. Is Tanner's open space now?
Yes.
The Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee is me and I was unable to make the last meeting. It was last Monday. I'm assuming they'll have another one the coming Monday. Agricultural Commission, they meet this Thursday. Okay, wow, you guys took on a lot. So Capital Planning Committee.
Has. They won't meet again until fall.
Economic Development Committee.
Did not meet because I was unable to be there.
Sir, I believe that is my report.
I apologize. I forgot that it was you when you're back.
The Economic Development Committee did not meet because Adam could not be there. And they will be meeting Thursday of next week.
Okay.
There, see?
Nice. Is Adam gonna be able to be there?
Yes. I've been released from my prison.
Okay, well, we seldom get a good laugh like that unless Dave is here. And we get twice today. Stormwater Task Force.
Uh, we meet on Thursday of this week.
Okay. And did we appoint anybody for? Yeah.
That's me. The next two are mine. MRPC and MJTC. We had our meetings last week, nothing related to report Lunenburg-wise, mostly about the updates to the MART systems. And I guess they're putting a little bit of money into upgrading the payment systems on and off the vehicles.
Okay, and that was for the transportation?
Yes, for both. I mean, it was basically the same subject in both meetings.
Okay. Well, that wraps out our committee reports, and now we're on to Adam.
This was an item that I placed on because my understanding was the Open Space Committee potentially was going to be appointing a member to the Economic Development Committee on Thursday. I didn't receive any communication that they had done so, so we can't appoint anybody if we don't know that they are seeking that appointment.
Okay.
Because the Economic Development Committee is a subcommittee of the Planning Board. Membership to that is required to be affirmed by this board. So when they put a candidate forward, I'll bring it to you.
So we don't have a talent bank form?
No.
Okay.
Because it's, they're being appointed as a member of that committee. So it's not, they're not seeking an appointment from the board. The Open Space Committee is recommending a membership. And so this board would be the appointing authority for the recommendation from Open Space.
Would they not be asked to fill out a talent bank form?
Not, I wouldn't expect so because it'll probably be a member of Open Space, so there's probably already a talent bank form on the file.
Okay, very good.
And Pondview, we're still just waiting for that to drop.
All right. All right, now follow-up. Zoning, infrastructure, and master plan. So the ongoing items, the zoning, infrastructure, and master plan.
Mm-hmm.
Was the zoning and infrastructure added at my request?
Yes. So that's the item about looking at what to do with Chase Road and the joint meeting of either chairs or members of committees. And that's something I am working to arrange.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I've recently had, I've had a lot of conversations with individuals recently and proactive versus reactive has been a theme in a few of them. And I just, I just wanna remind everybody.
Be proactive, yeah.
I would, I would love to. And I mean, if we don't talk about it until he's here and it's done.
Yeah, no, no, and that's.
That proactive is out the window.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so then the meeting schedule. We got 6 PM, all board meetings held at Town Hall, June 27, July 11. We've got a 260 Fallula Road coming back July 11. Oh, and that was, that was just a little tiny piece in Lunenburg for the.
It's about a third of the project, but yeah.
Well, okay, but no actual physical building?
Yeah.
Was there? Okay.
About a third of the building.
And it's still in here, right?
Probably not.
I left it here. It should be here.
Well, it's probably in the office. It's probably not here because it's.
Okay, because it's not for this week. I got you. I got you. It takes me a little while sometimes.
But I mean, the majority, the majority of the impact on that project is stormwater and wetland-related as opposed to traffic and otherwise because all of the traffic and, excuse me, happenings are going on to Crawford Street and Airport Road.
Right.
So it's really confusing because we call it Fallula because it's that in Lunenburg, but it actually is on Crawford Street and Airport Road in Fitchburg. So if you called Fitchburg, they'd say, we don't have anything on Fallula, but we have this Crawford and Airport Road project.
We never get confusing things like that. All right, so then that brings us to the ongoing items. Any update on any of those?
We've applied for the grant for the zoning for the MBTA communities. It was put in by MRPC with our assistance and now we're waiting to hear if they're gonna fund us for it.
Has there been any update on the resistance to that?
No, not anything substantial, but even some of the more urban Boston-centric communities are pushing back.
Okay.
They're frustrated by the demands and the potential impacts from infrastructure and development to what they have going on there. And honestly, it's impactful here in Lunenburg and it's potentially devastating. But we theoretically have an entire 27 square miles to work with. And some of the more urban communities and some of the more direct MBTA communities are being told it needs to be within a half mile of stations. And so they're dealing with a much more limited geographic scope and how that impacts their development could potentially be as devastating in a different way.
Yep. Very good. If anybody has any questions on this, guys, speak up.
I have a, so the whole MBTA, MBTA communities thing. This is more the high-level strategy thinking it through. Because this is not a law. This is a, we won't let you have these grants.
Oh, it's a law.
Oh, is it a law? It went through the legislature.
MGL 40A 3A.
Ah, so once Charlie leaves office, that doesn't.
That doesn't go away.
Doesn't go away.
Okay, that's one of the things I was, okay, I didn't realize it had been passed through the legislature. Gosh darn it. All right, thank you.
But it's still, it's still just a threat. It's a stick and a carrot, mostly stick.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a stick and you don't get your carrot.
Stick and a bigger stick.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, I think I saw the town manager actually speak on this at one of the select board meetings. And she was giving her reports.
Possibly.
So anyways, what I remember hearing about it, and I'm pretty sure it was from her or through her, was that this is not anything affordable about it.
No, there is not. There's nothing, there's no requirement of affordability. And, and I, and, you know, frankly, that's something that I think is a giant detriment to this because a lot of affordable housing advocates have latched on to opposition to this and said, look at these rich communities being snobs about being forced to build affordable housing. And, and there's nothing that requires any affordability to it.
Well, not only that, I mean, the majority of the commuters on the rail would be probably more likely to be needing affordable housing rather than people driving.
Yes, correct. And, and now, I think what the town manager referenced was that having an affordable requirement within any bylaw that you create may.
Is not enforceable.
Well, not even, not enforceable, but may invite legal challenge.
That's what I was remembering.
Conversely to that, though, we have a pre-existing inclusionary housing bylaw.
For 10 or more units.
That if you build nine, more than nine units, you trigger a requirement for affordability. And if you build more than 35 units, that percentage increases. So I think that anyone who were to challenge that legally would most likely lose because that law has been on our books for a number of years. So anything that does potentially, if, if the town goes ahead and adopts this zoning and someone comes and builds under it, they would be obligated under our existing zoning to add affordable units.
At those two quantity breaks, right?
Correct. You know, and that's, it's 10 and 15%. So one, one would probably infer that they're gonna be in the 15 range because 34 units is, that's what, a little over two acres for this requirement? And when you're building something like that, the order of magnitude costs to put more units becomes much more manageable. So it potentially creates a situation where the town continues to keep pace with the affordable housing quantum that we have to meet, but at what cost and in what shape is still to be kind of determined.
All right. So that was, that was your first zoning, infrastructure, master plan? Any, well, you've already said, I think, there's no update? And you've already said then to Pondview, so that's it, right?
Yep.
Okay. So public comment. This is Linda's time to shine.
I think she's just monitoring. Perhaps she's writing a nice news article.
Possibly. Just wanted to make sure that she was, they were included if they wanted to be. And then board comments, concerns?
None.
None?
Nothing? I have a question. So the condos at Whalen Park have recently changed ownership, correct?
Apartments, yes.
I saw a post about a resident there saying that they did not, the new owners did not acquire, I think it's the Lemonster parcel that was part of that. We have nothing to do with that, and that Lemonster parcel had nothing to do with our permitting process for that, did it?
If it's in Lemonster, no.
Okay, so I guess, I guess that was my, and I'm not positive that it is, but it was mentioned that there was a parcel that was not purchased and I'm pretty sure it probably was a Lemonster parcel.
Yeah, I would expect it would have to have been a Lemonster.
Okay, so there's no, there's no way that they possibly can subdivide that or sell less property than was available because the units they got were based on the acreage to the tenant?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I know that there was a house on Whalen Road. Is it still Whalen Road when it comes across Electric?
I think so.
Unsure about that, that little part from Electric to the traffic circle, but whatever. It was, there was a house there. It might have been Prospect Street. And they wanted to connect to Sewer, but they didn't have any frontage. And the parcel in front of them was owned by Emerald Place. Emerald Place was willing to sell them an access strip, but when it was, when I did some research on it, it was part of the square footage calculation for parcel, allowed them to get the number of units that they got.
Well, they could have sold an easement.
You cannot connect over an easement to Sewer in Lunenburg.
Okay. Okay.
But they figured something out, but that was, so I, I don't know that there's any land that could have been sold at all, should have been calculated with the, with the units.
Right, so.
Including the parcel next to Mr. Mohammed.
So they also had a sizable parcel across the street?
That's the one I just referenced.
Okay. And did they, did they retain that, do you know?
I don't, I would have to.
It really doesn't matter.
At this point, it, you know, the, the units are there. And that's a commercial parcel. So if someone were to attempt to build a commercial building there, that could be something that may impede them in some sort of title or other search, but.
Was that commercial property part of the calculation? I don't think it was because they did say that they intended to later on develop it for commercial purposes.
Oh, did they?
I thought they did.
I, I would have to really look at it, that whole, the way they, it is really sorcery. The way that they came up with those.
The way that that.
The way that that density was calculated.
That permit was issued, yes. I got you. All right, I guess that's it. If there's no other comments. I guess I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
Excellent. Any, any discussion about adjourning? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, folks.
7:52.